We want to welcome you to our city commission meeting. We ask that you turn off or silence all cell phones. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at 7:00 P.M. and also at midnight. And you can also view the meeting on YouTube. And I also want to send a special invite to anybody else who want to continue to attend our city commission meetings. The second and fourth is open to the citizens to be able to speak, and first and third is our study sessions. Welcome. At this time, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Jerry Overby, who will be representing Troop 167.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to be having the Mayor's Awards presentation. Thank you, Troop 167. We really appreciate it. Ms. Olivia Price?
For exceptional contributions to the City of Leavenworth in commitment to community outreach and service projects. As a local homeschool student, Olivia has participated in the American Heritage Girls Organization and on her own accord to provide over 250 service hours in the community over the past three years. She recently completed a community outreach project which required 15 hours to implement. Your community service works through a strong commitment to the community as a whole continues to enrich the quality of life for residents of Leavenworth, Kansas. We want to thank you and we appreciate your community service.
But it wasn't about like an award for me, it was just about really serving the community and helping. So, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Ms. Sonia Gordon. For exceptional contributions to the City of Leavenworth in commitment to the Little Angels. Little Angels is a young girls' group who conducts outreach at nursing homes, sends care packages to our troops overseas, participates in park cleanups, and teaches love from one another and how to be kind and self-sufficient. Your work through the Little Angels is a valuable resource for our youth that continues to enrich our community. Thank you, Ms. Sonia Gordon, for your community services.
Uh, well, I just, I just love our community so much. I was born and raised here, and so that anything that I can ever do to change kids' lives, I was a, a child to a single mom, and I didn't have a lot of things when I was growing up here that I could do. So God laid on my heart to be the things to the girls in the community that I didn't have when I was young. So you'll probably see me everywhere, I'll make sandwiches for that group, and I'll send money for that group, and I'll help wherever God leads and, and help to touch the city, and I appreciate this. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, consideration of previous meeting minutes. Minutes from July 23rd, 2019, regular meeting, and August 6th, 2019, special meeting. Entertainer motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the July 23rd and August 6th, 2019, special meeting and regular meeting.
Second. Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. Next item on the agenda, new business. This is open up to the citizens who would like to discuss anything that is not related to any items on the agenda.
Mayor.
Please approach. Understand, please. State your first and last name and your address, please.
My name is Lisa Nicholson, 16931 Mount Olivet Road in Leavenworth. I come to you today as a woman of this community and as the OBGYN that lives and works in this community and provides complete care to the women in this community. I come with many of my coworkers and some of my patients who have come to discuss the recent change to women's health services in this community. It is important that we, we find it important to convey to you why it's important. So what we just handed out to you is a little bit, there's a picture graphic on the back and then words if words are better. But really to explain to you why it's important that women's health care be a priority in this community, why it's important and what the impact is going to be when complete women's health care leaves this community. And so Mayor, if you would afford us the opportunity, there are a few people that would like to help maybe put a face and explain a little further and a little deeper why this is very important and critical. And then I'll kind of just tie it all up at the end if you don't, if you can give us that time.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Could you state your name and address, please?
My name is Jessica Lisk, and my address is 2039 Ottawa Street, 204A, in Leavenworth. I'm here today on behalf of the pregnant woman. It's important for us to have women's health care, like in my situation. For us to deliver, we have to go 45 minutes away, and for us, it's, it's hard. We, I don't know how to word this. We're suffering because our OB is going, our preter, our prenatal care, it's, it's all gone, and we have nothing. And most of Leavenworth is low income, you know, we have issues getting rides out 45 minutes away for prenatal care that will go from every couple of months to every month to every two weeks to every week, you know, it's, it's hard, and it takes a toll because like people have to take off work, so you lose income, you know, and we're just, it's hard, like I'm high risk, so if something was to happen, I'd have to either find a way out to Overland Park and I could have my baby on the way, I could have a seizure during my labor, and my baby or me could die. And we're trying to get something in the community where that's not going to happen, you know what I mean? It's somewhere safe for us to have, close home. And we're just asking you to be our bigger voice to help us in the community. We understand that St. Luke's is gone, but we want another option, some other type of help. And that's...
I, I don't know what the city can do. I mean, St. Luke's made this decision, I'm not happy about it. I'm definitely not happy about it. And, and, but we don't have any say in it. I don't understand what we can do as a, as a body here.
Well, there's, um, we... Yeah, she can, she has ideas.
So the reason why we are here and what is important is that we know, we know that you can't, we know that this decision was made without any of our input. And so what we want as members of this community and for you as our leaders is to help us generate support within the community and help us secure funding. Because many of my coworkers that are here live and work in this community and want to continue to serve our neighbors, and we want to continue to provide health care in this community, it's important to us. It is, it is a desperate need. Rural communities and hospitals in rural communities are falling at a very high rate in this country. Rural communities and, in a very similar breath, poor people essentially are being told that they're expendable resources, that they're not worthy, that they don't have inherent value because of where they choose to live and because of their level of income and their resources. And yes, medicine is a business, and that is the hard part of providing care within that, because those of us who provide care are not business people. And so for that reason, we're here to, to explain to you why we want that, and we want your support to help us build a grassroots effort to help take care of our own, the business that was here that was providing care to the women of this community left. And that, it leaves it up to us. We are here now to, to do this, it's left to us. And if we don't stand up and take care of it and do it in a professional way at a high level with high-quality care, we are going, we are a community that is at great risk of being taken advantage of by lower-quality providers. For instance, lay midwives are legal in the state of Kansas. So that means that a group could come in or a person could come into this community without any training, they are not regulated, they don't have any continuing education, they have no requirements for physician oversight. These are literally like, I saw one, once, I'm good, we can do it at your house safely, and I'm going to charge you for it. And there's no legal recourse against that. This community is at risk for that. And that is, in my opinion, a lesser standard of care and something that is going to harm the women and children of this community. And that is something that we should all be very, take very, very seriously. And so for that reason, we are hopeful that this, the reason why we're all here today is that we can impress upon you how much it matters to us, that we aren't going to just roll over. We all live here, we all are vested in the well-being of the women and children of this community and the future here, and are, are not willing to just become a statistic and, and beneath the red line essentially on a budget. And that's kind of what we've become, so...
So have you talked to St. Luke's? Have you talked to the CEOs and the, the higher-ups at St. Luke's?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know what to say, honestly. I just, I was born here, my kids were born here, I don't, I don't know what to say.
You mentioned help or support from the city commission in terms of helping to secure funding. What, what, I think that's what I heard you say. What do you mean by that?
Yeah, so we're looking, we're trying to get a GoFundMe campaign started and get that promoted, any grants or anything that could be available to us. There, I'm, I'm not kidding when I say we have a full complement of people that can provide the necessary care to the women of this community. And what happens too often is that when OB services leave communities, what we know is that maternal death rates go up, neonatal newborn death rates go up, women choose to not, that transportation is an issue. There are women, and so because of that, they're not going to choose to drive or get to, catch a ride or whatever it is that, that they, how to get to wherever they need, they're going to choose not to. They're not going to choose to miss three hours of work for all that travel time, and so they won't get the necessary prenatal care. And what we know is that absence of prenatal care increases their risk of dying and their baby's risk of dying significantly. And, and these are all issues. We are going to see women and children dying in this community. There, I know there have been a small group of teenagers in this town that have been talking now about having planned home births, which should scare every single one of us. That is more than just not having resources. I mean, the bad outcomes that can happen after that are terrifying. And so these are things that I think as a community, I believe that people are powerful, I believe we can do these things. And yes, it takes money, and this is, the problem is that we all still need to be able to pay the bills and turn the lights on. But we shouldn't have people in this community choosing to forego routine medical care because they need to put food on their family's plates or because they need to, you know, pay the rent. And so for that reason, I feel like it's critically important that we continue services in this community, and if we can't figure that out, someone else will, and it may be a lesser quality resource, and, and that should also be scary.
Well, I think it's good that you came and spoke so that the public, I mean, we're televised, so the public can see this. Would it be possible for me to just meet with this group and discuss options that they have? Just to show... I'm on the board of Cushing, but we had no say, we had no say.
And that's, that's my understanding, ma'am.
So I wouldn't be representing Cushing, I'd be representing myself.
And I am not here in that aspect.
And I'm not representing the commission, but I would like to meet with you all.
And, and we are prepared, we have ideas. Like I said, we, a lot of people in this room have been born at Cushing and have generations born at Cushing and can speak to that. Cushing's been delivering babies in this community for 125 years straight until last Wednesday.
St. John's too, not just Cushing, but St. John's too.
Yeah, until last Wednesday. And, and that all stopped in Leavenworth County. No one delivers babies in a hospital in this county any longer, and, and, and that's a sad day. And, and so I think there are a lot of us that are motivated and are happy to meet with you and use the resources that you guys have in the community to help us find a way to try and build it slowly. But I think we do have dreams and great ideas, but these things, this is happening to rural communities every single day in this country, and I don't know that enough fight back. And I feel like that's what we should do, because it, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be subjected to substandard medical care just because we choose to live in a rural community or just because we happen to fall below the poverty line and Medicaid is our health insurance and it just isn't the right insurance.
Okay. I, okay, I would like to meet with you, and let's, let's do that another time. I want to, I have over 30 years of experience in medical care, and I have seen other hospitals close and other things happen like this. So I, I would like to meet with you on your own, just representing myself and working with you.
Yes, ma'am, I look forward to that.
Okay, okay. I think my stuff is online, you can see my phone number and address, so give me a call.
Yeah, one thing I just want to say to each and every last one of you all that came out together, this is what makes our community so special, that we all come together for the greater cause to make a difference, and there's power and strength in numbers. So I just appreciate everybody, you know, who's stepping up to the plate, you know, expressing their concerns and standing up for what's right. And I truly believe, you know, down the road, in due time, change will take place, and we will be rewarded for our great works and efforts. So I just wanted to say thank you all for coming out and expressing your concerns as well.
I believe that, too.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
No, the only thing I would say is that as you continue to develop your ideas, I mean, as one commissioner, as you continue to develop your ideas from a legal and a moral standpoint, I mean, I'm, I'm more than willing to, to listen, and I'm thinking there may be some other options that other communities have implemented when their hospitals have left, so that's kind of what I'm thinking. But I, like, I would just endorse what the mayor just said in terms of coming and talking to us, and it is a situation that I know that I'm not happy about, and I think most of the commissioners or all the commissioners up here aren't happy about, but there's only so much we can do. But from a moral, particularly a moral standpoint, supportive of what you're doing, and if you can keep us abreast of what you're doing and how we might help, over and above what you've spoken to us about tonight, I'd be all ears.
We can't do it alone.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And I applaud Commissioner Bowder for stepping up. She is uniquely qualified of the five of us up here. I was going to say 40 years of experience, so I'm sorry. Commissioner Bowder's 30 years, but medical care, labs, medical administration, she will understand, she understands the language, obviously.
And risk management.
She's birthed two children in this town. She can be a strong advocate for you, and maybe she'll report back to us, but she's the most uniquely qualified of the five of us here for a variety of reasons.
If you wouldn't mind, I would just like to say one other thing that I think has been discounted about what this impact, I mean, clearly there's going to be a ripple effect in the health and well-being of our women, I think that's not, that's easy to see. There is going to be an economic impact for sure, but I saw Chief Burge here, and the thing that I, I actually, it was one of the EMS crews that brought it to my attention this, just this last week. The women in this community, because many of them don't have the resources and the availability to get anywhere else for help, are going to still present to Cushing's ER.
To ER, right, exactly.
And so the ER has been somewhat prepared for this, and, but the EMS crews have not been, and we have a limited number of ambulance crews that exist in this community. A pregnant patient that presents to the ER at Cushing over 20 weeks to station will be unable to be cleared by the ER crew and will require transport to a facility that provides obstetric care, which is going to mean that those ambulance crews are going to be out of this community for two to three hours at a time, transferring obstetric patients to other outlying hospitals, which is going to result in an increase in our 911 response time and overall wellness, and emergency services are going to decline within this community. So while women and children services oftentimes are seen as a very like niche thing, even though women are 50% of the population and require the care that I provide at all aspects of their life from cradle to grave, that cannot be understated. And I was very grateful to the, I think it was like 23-year-old EMT that brought that to my attention. I hadn't even thought that far in, in advance, but that is something that is happening now since LND has closed last week. And so those are things that we will start to see. We will start to see a negative impact in all aspects of health in this community. So this is where the urgency comes from, so that we can provide, so that we can be the ones who step in and provide a high quality of care to this community, and we can also stop that from happening.
Thank you, Doctor, for advocating for our mothers.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Senator, ma'am.
Thank you. Good job.
The next item on your, on our agenda?
There may be more.
Oh, is there more? Oh, would anybody else like to come up and speak? Please forgive me.
On another topic, yeah.
On another?
Another topic.
Topic, yes, ma'am.
Not on that topic.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, if you want to welcome them to speak, please forgive me.
My topic.
Okay.
All right. My knees are knocking, but I had to come because this was important to me, and I want to thank you for letting me speak. Yes, Elaine Gann, 1215 Ninth Avenue, Leavenworth, and I've been here 25 years. And I'm here tonight because I hired a local company, a tree service, to remove a tree from my property, and I went through a list of people and I found somebody I thought was good. Then when they took the tree down, it fell on my gazebo and it demolished it, and I was promised at that time a replacement for my gazebo. And now it's been two months later and nothing's going on, I just have a pile of rubble in the backyard. Anyway, before I hired anyone, I insisted, because I thought I should, I insisted they be insured, bonded, and licensed with the city. And I thought I would be safe then in case of any property or personal damage. And so that's why I'm here, is because I discovered now that a city license and being bonded and being insured is not a protection for me at all. And I called the city today because I was very confused and I didn't know how I could get any help, and I'll tell you in a minute, things I tried. So I wasn't even able to learn the name of the insurance company without paying a fee or doing some kind of rigmarole, and so the business nor the city could release the insurance company's name to me, and I can't be guaranteed because of being ignored that this person's just going to take care of it or not. I mean, I, I don't have anything in writing, I have no assurance that my mess is not going to be there, and anyway, it's bad. So the license process, I consider, is not a guarantee of a benefit of any kind, of any kind to a homeowner. It is a method, and I understand it, it's used by the city to protect themselves in case a contractor, someone causes damage and a suit is brought, brought against the city by a comp, because of that company's negligence. That means the city is not at fault, so they have to make sure they're protected, and I, I understand, but I thought somehow I was in that process, and I am not. So there is no way for a homeowner like myself could know that the city licensing of businesses was not a protection. I thought it was, and I was always told that we should and must hire people from our own city that have a license and not, not people from, or like, or down somewhere else. So I figured there was a reason for this, and I assumed because they live close and that they're a local company, they would be trustworthy. And I thought that at least the license would guarantee a way to obtain information if something did happen, and also to see the company's history, or maybe at some point if something happened, I could find out if this was like a good or bad company, or if it had a list of complaints or maybe a list of compliments. But this isn't true. There is no tracking or there's no monitoring, monitoring system. We're on our own to detect the crooks from the good guys, and I hate that language, but that's just basically how I feel. So now I've, I've done a lot of work and, and I called, and I'm almost harassing this person that will not take care of the problem, and I'm just done, I'm just done doing that. So I feel like I'm left with three choices, to keep haggling by myself with my adversary, or number two, I could file a police report or a report with the Better Business Bureau, which in the past I had done that with other damage to my house, and that went absolutely nowhere. So I'm not even going to try that. My third choice would be to hire a lawyer, which yay, I can't afford that. If I could, I would fix this gazebo myself. So my fourth choice that I considered, but I haven't done it, but that is, I could turn this into my own insurance company. I would, he already guaranteed me, I would pay a higher premium, and I would pay a huge deductible for someone else's problems, for someone else's error and negligence. So I'm asking for your help because I think somehow we, especially new people in town that don't know, or maybe older people like me that maybe don't know how to find out, but I think we need to make licensing stand for something or make a different way to protect homeowners, whatever that could be. But I would like to see us stop issuing license, licenses, either new ones or reissuing licenses if a company has had a bad record, but still, I have no way of tracking or knowing that, what their record is. So do we just go with a smile and a handshake? I mean, is that the world we're living in? I don't think so. So a license, I think, should be, should put a homeowner at ease. No one has time to do a full search of every company. How would you begin to do that anyway? Because their friends would say they're great and their enemies? Well, they wouldn't like them at all. So surely I think we could document somehow in a legitimate way if there are complaints as well as deserved compliments with home building inside and out or any kind of property repair. But homeowners and businesses, I think we need to weigh in this town to build a trust, and right now we don't have that. And I can tell you that because when I ask my neighbors and friends, one will say, this guy's wonderful, another person will say, you don't know what he did to my family, you know? So I'm just asking if there is any help, I would appreciate it, and I would like to know if there is a way that doesn't put another burden on me of having to pay for find out information. Thanks.
Elaine? Elaine? Could you give me a call tomorrow?
Okay.
I'll give you a hand with this.
At, at least maybe somebody can kick around and, and tell me if there's something I'm missing, maybe I don't know all the rules here, I don't know.
I think you, oh, go ahead, go ahead. Give me a call, we'll talk about it. Yeah, I just had one question. In order to get you a license, you have to show proof of insurance, correct? Yes. But I, I think the, the citizen who just spoke to us talked about building trust. To me, that's a very important quality within this community.
me, that's a very important quality within this community, and it, it make, it is evident in a lot of different ways. And I don't know, I hadn't really ever thought of that, but I think this citizen has put a lot of thought into it. I, I don't know what we could do as a city commission, but once again, I don't know what I don't know. And so, I would say that maybe a study session to talk about licensing and what the City of Leavenworth stands for with respect to its licensing program, could be 10 or 15 minutes well-spent.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Was I wrong to think that because I'm supposed to hire someone licensed in the city, that there would be a benefit to me to do that?
No, I, I, no, I'm not, no, I think you made a lot of great points. And I, part of it's strategic communication and exactly what our program is and means to the citizens of Leavenworth. And that's why I was saying that maybe a little bit more study, so we at least understand. And if we're comfortable with the way the program is now, maybe we won't make any changes. But maybe we could make a few changes. I don't know. But I thought you made a very good persuasive argument, and particularly in terms of building trust, because that to me is a, really a value that we have to continue to support and encourage from being city commissioners.
I'd like to hear from our staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, and could you provide us with some information on how to buy a city commission license?
I don't know.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Okay.
If not, next item on the agenda, review properties of demolition lists, given 90-day extensions.
This will be Julie Hurley, our Director of Planning and Community Development, will go through these properties.
Hey, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. As you'll recall, back on May 14th of this year, the Commission reviewed a list of properties that we had identified as being eligible for potential demolition. At that time, you voted to grant an extension of 90 days to the owners of 11 of those properties in order to do work on those, to bring them into compliance. And there was one additional property, 795 Spruce, that was granted a, an extension at a later date, so, to, to today. So, we're gonna just go through a review of those. The first property is 905 Washington. The top picture was in May, the bottom picture was last week. This property owner is intending to take the property down themselves and is in the process of getting the utilities disconnected. We do have verification from most of the utility companies. I think it may be all the utility companies at this point that they have been disconnected. So, he is in the process of getting that taken down himself.
Great.
Did you like to speak? Uh, please come up, sir.
My name's Jeremy Bowen. I live at 113 Apple Lane in Lansing, Kansas. And I've been waiting 43 days on the gas company to disconnect the gas.
Has it been disconnected yet, or?
As of Friday morning, when I come to your guys' office, they still have not worked on it.
It's still not?
So, my hands are tied until the gas company disconnects, aside from digging a hole in the yard and leaving it open, which I already had a machine in there once on July 5th, disconnected the sewer on my own. And believe me, I wanted to smash it, but I didn't have the permit, so I didn't figure out how to do that.
I got you.
So, I am in the process. I would just like an extension. They're really tying me up.
So, what do you want to say?
Ms. Hurley, is that common, to get 40 days or so from the gas company?
It, it can. I know that even for the city, when we request a utility disconnect, sometimes it can take quite a while. And I would imagine for an individual property owner, it could potentially take longer. So, I, yeah, I'm not surprised that that could be the case.
So, when you talk to Mr. Bowen, where they say, "Yeah, we'll get back to you," type thing?
That's pretty much all they say. The other, the other utilities, because usually most utility companies, when you call for a disconnect, because I've done this before, take about two weeks. And I started the process back in June.
Yeah.
And everybody was done in like two weeks. The only exception was the water, which I talked to the water company. And the water company told me, since I wanted to keep the meter, I was going to pay $500 to the city, which was wrong. They were wrong when they told me that. I've since went over there and paid them $500. And if they don't disconnect, I will disconnect on my side, which is legal to do, in my yard on the other side of the meter, so that I'm not held up by that. Because that, what I was told on that was not right. Because actually, their office is the one that relayed it back to me, and I pushed it back on them, and we got it taken care of. So, I planned on paying the 500 when I paid for the $50 permit, but I wasn't gonna take off a day, go pay $500 for the water, which I was still waiting on the gas, go back to work, come back, pay another $50. I mean, I was just gonna do it one shot, because I was gonna disconnect it on my own if they didn't. Because it's on, it's on my side. It's legal to disconnect anything from the meter to the house.
So, they haven't gave you a timeline at all?
They're saying that they're running 45 days out, is what I'm hearing. So, that will put them right about now. When I leave here, I'll go check it. The last time I checked it was Friday morning, to see if they've dug in the yard. And if you've heard from them, I'll contact your guys' office again.
Yeah, I, I'm not aware that we've heard from anyone, but yeah. So, I, I would suggest a 60-day extension just to account for delays that he's experiencing.
Yeah, because it's not his fault, so.
Right.
Do we need to make a motion to that effect, or do we need to wait till the end?
I think we can do at the end.
Yeah. It's a motion one.
Yeah, so, yeah. So, the city clerk will keep track of all the, the consensus on each, and then we'll make one motion.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen.
Are you guys through with me then?
Yes. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, the next property is 1605 Terry. This one has had permits issued for siding, roof, and upgraded electrical work. And work is currently ongoing at this property. Again, the top picture is back in May, bottom picture is current. You can see that there's, the roofing work has taken place, siding work is taking place. The owner is in the process of working on this, and he is here to speak to you.
Can I just give you a quick rundown? All the siding, all the old siding's been tore off, and OSB board put on, and house wrapped. Then, we installed new windows and doors. We restructured the roof and put soffits around the whole house. And so, we're really ready for shingles and vinyl now. And like I said, new and electrical service has been installed before, so.
Sounds good.
So, what, what's, is there a staff recommendation on an extension?
Yeah, we would suggest an extension to you. I would say 60 days, just so we can kind of keep them all together again.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next property is 514 Lynn. We do have a permit issued for the roof, which has been installed. There is no other visible work that's been completed that staff can tell. The other items needing to be taken care of were to have all of the windows and doors replaced or repaired. They cannot be boarded up. They still are as of last week. And then, just to paint the exterior where it's needed. And I believe the owner representative is here.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Marcus Bray, representing 514 Lynn Street. Yeah, we're just waiting for the permit so that we can get fully started on general. We're still waiting for actual contractor bids to come in for the HVAC plumbing and electrical before we can get those permits. But if we get the permit on the general, we should be done with all the external work by the 27th.
Okay.
So, and then, we hopefully will have all the bids back for internal work, so that we can get all those permits submitted by that point as well.
Sounds good.
So, I'm trying to understand the permit versus the, the work? What, what's the, what, what comes first? He can't, I mean, yeah.
So, they'll need to get a permit before they can do the work. And as he said, a lot of times, they'll need to wait for their contractors before they can pull a permit.
Oh, okay.
So, so they're in the process of doing that. So, if the Commission, again, would like to give an extension, I would suggest, again, 60 days to keep them together.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, the next property is 603 Reece Street. There has been no visible change and no permits issued on this one. And just to let you know, the items that needed to be completed were repair, replace the roof, same with soffits and eaves, guttering, and to paint the entire structure.
Any communication with the owner?
No.
Did we extend this one?
Yes.
Why?
Uh, the owner.
I know it's our decision, wasn't it your decision?
And any of them that, that got an extension, the owner was here and asked for an extension.
Okay, but they've done absolutely nothing?
No.
I, I, I bet we do, go with immediate demo, no, demoed it. No extension.
No extension.
So, having said that, what, what's the timeline? How, when will it be demolished? Like another week, or two weeks, or three weeks?
Now, we'll have to start another process for this and go through our environmental review process. We have to go through utility disconnects. And so, it's, the, the ones that you approved for demolition back in May, just recently came down within the last couple of weeks. So, it's, it's a two-plus month process to get through everything we need to do.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next property is 795 Spruce. This is the one that was originally not given an extension, but the owner did file action against the city to halt the demolition after the May 14th meeting. This was in court in July, and the judge continued this for hearing to next Wednesday. And so, we would recommend that this be given an extension. The staff will bring this back after the court has had time to take action on this property.
Okay.
What's the court gonna, what are the, what are the options of the court? What, what, what are the options of the, of the court?
I mean, the, the court had essentially asked, had set this date for the property owner to obtain an attorney.
Right.
And had kind of hinted at, they were, he would like to have seen some sort of resolution at some point. You know, I think there is a remediation agreement in place.
Right.
I don't believe that it's been fully completed. And so, we'll update the judge at that point.
Good.
That's the status of that. And what the judge can do is, is really up to him. He could do anything from dismiss the, dismiss the case for lack of standing on the proceeding, to finding that enough remediation has been done, that he wants to extend it again, to finding that this hasn't been done. They have, the remediation agreement hasn't been complied with, and therefore allowing the city to proceed as it, as it would have. So, that's the information. So, we've still got another week to see
Sure.
where we are in the remediation process. We'll present that to the judge.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Warren.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm, I'm dead knight at 791. I would like to, I'd just like to know, since we have an agreement to take care of the structure, we've done mostly everything other than painting the building. We did take out a permit, and the permit was revoked because of the sewer. So, my question is, the appearance of the building, which the city wanted us to take care of, because they said the, the, the building was eye sore. So, we made the building look a whole lot better. And it's looking pretty good. So, I would like to, for that permit to be read and stated, so we just can go ahead and finish fixing it. I don't, I don't know if either sewer would have anything to do with the appearance of the building, because the issue was the appearance of the building. We cannot even see the sewer. I just want the building looking nice on that corner.
No, appreciate it. And we'll bring it back. Like I said, you still have an extension, and we'll bring it back and relook at it. Thank you.
Okay, the next property is 1021 South Second Street. There's been no visible change and no permits issued on this one. And just to let you know, the items needed to be taken care of were that the roof needed to be finished. They had started working on the roof. Soffits and eaves needed to be repaired, and the entire structure needed to be painted.
And it is vacant.
Yes.
Okay.
Is anybody here to represent? No?
So, keep it on the list.
Keep it on the list.
Go ahead and proceed.
Okay.
Okay.
The next one is 1214 Ninth Avenue. This one, actually, all items are completed. You can see in the picture, the top is back in April, the bottom is currently. And so, staff would recommend that this one be taken off of the list.
So much nicer, so much nicer.
Yes.
Great.
Yes, sir. You'd like to speak?
Yeah, Dan, this one's mine. I've bought multiple demo loans, and I always have a problem with, like, this one, we had to push back the closing date, because I can never get a letter. And mortgage companies, this comes up on their list. Like somehow, they find out that it's on a demo list, and they won't even close on any loans until we get something from the city that states that it's not gonna be demoed, because banks don't wanna loan money if it's on a demo.
Right. I think it's a good idea.
And so, I came in there many times before a close date, and says, "Hey, can I get a letter that I can send off?" And every time, I'm saying like, "No, you gotta wait a month. You gotta wait two months until we have this meeting." Is there anything that we can do that, once they know that everything's, I mean, everything's been fixed up for a month, month and a half, and it's been told?
I, I would say yes.
Yeah, is there a quicker way?
It would need to come back to the Commission to be taken off of the list.
Okay.
And so, what we've always told the owner is that, staff, we can't give him a letter saying that it's not on a demolition list until it comes back to this meeting or the permission to take action on it.
I got you.
So, and I can get him a, a letter tomorrow, which I've done in the past on another property as well.
Could you state your name, please?
Yeah, so we just basically, we have meetings.
Gabe.
But, but what, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, when the city commission is, has taken an action, then it takes another action of the city commission.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, I don't know. I mean, we, we deal with all these together, but I mean, I wouldn't mind dealing with, I mean, I, I guess it's not ideal, or, well, just a regular meeting with, if there's two or three that are really kind of ahead of, ahead of the power curve, why couldn't we just deal with two or three, you know, when, when they're ready? That's all I'm saying. I mean, we've been waiting to, for 10, 15, or 20. And so, I guess that's the most efficient way for the staff, but...
Yeah, I'll, I'll say this is the only owner that we've had who's come in and asked us to get some sort of written verification. So, you know, even the others that maybe have been completed prior to the deadline date, which we love to see, it hasn't been an issue.
Okay.
But we could certainly, you know, look into bringing one back early if this was needed for...
It would, it would be an exception. I understand that.
Yeah, and I think it was the scheduling that a meeting, that's what took this one a lot longer.
Right.
Yeah, but yeah, we can certainly look into that if that comes up.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
And it would actually help me have more funding, because I'm in the process of buying a few more on your list.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Then I can actually, so these wouldn't even be an issue half the way.
Get more houses.
On this list.
The standard.
Exactly.
So, I, I, you're, you're hindering me from being halfway through another home.
Sure.
You know?
We got you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the next one is 305 North Second Street. This one, the work is in progress. Permits have been issued for interior renovations and siding. Previously in May, you can see there was a, a room on the back of the home that would, had been just framed in and sitting that way for a couple of years. They've gotten that mostly completed, and they are working on the rest of it as of now. The items that needed to be done were to repair, replace all exterior walls and siding, and soffits and eaves, same with windows and doors, and then paint the structure. So, this is a work in progress. They're making progress on it.
Okay, I'd be okay with extending.
60 days or remove?
We would suggest an extension. We would not suggest it be removed.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the next one is 326 Osage. This property is under new ownership since the last meeting. Work is ongoing on it. Permits have been issued for electrical, miscellaneous repairs, windows, interior renovations, and structural repairs. So, there has been some substantial work that's been completed, but it is, again, a work in progress, and they are doing that work on the property.
So, six, recommending?
So, we would suggest another extension.
All right.
Now, the next property is 400 North Fifth Street. There's been no visible change to it and no permits issued. The work is obviously not complete. The items that needed to be completed were to repair, replace the entire roof, repair, replace the exterior staircase, repair, replace the siding, soffits and eaves, windows and doors, and to paint the structure. And we've had no contact from the owner.
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the opportunity. I have recently been brought into the mix on this property. The owner is actually working in California. I do have some pictures. The staircase on the side was a serious safety hazard. I did not know the full city's punch list until just now. So, the other...